Good morning. You're welcome to the Planning and Economic Development Subcommittee. Today is September 18th, 2018. I am here with my colleagues, Councilwoman Stark and Councilwoman Felicita.
Mendoza.
Mendoza. Sorry, Felicita. You know you as Felicita. Sorry. I'm calling this meeting to order. I have no cards for call to the public. And one question that I have is minutes of the meetings because we, there are some of us that were not part of the minutes in June 6th. So how do we handle that?
Have you had a chance to review them?
I reviewed them, but there's, we were not on the committee.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I will move to consent items, items two through four. Does anybody have any questions? Is there motions for items two through four?
I move to approve items two through four. Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Motion passes. We are on item five.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. We are here today to talk to you about a new residential development here in downtown Phoenix. With me today is Zandon Keating, Program Manager in Economic Development, and Eric Johnson, Deputy Director of Community and Economic Development. As we move forward, I'd like to turn it over to Zandon to walk you through the terms of this project.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee.
It's not working. Slight technical difficulty. We'll be right back with you.
It was not on. All right. So we're here today to talk about this site. It's at the Arizona Center. It's a long vacant piece of property. It was originally intended to be developed as part of the Arizona Center, but obviously market conditions resulted in it remaining vacant until hopefully this time. And we have a developer who's interested in developing a multifamily residential development here. Tell you a little bit about the development group, North American Development Group. They're a nationwide developer. They have about 9,000 residential units in various stages of development at this moment. So they're, they're a large group. They've brought in sun construction, to do the construction in this project. They've also brought in the Will Bruder architects, a well-known local architect, to design it for them. Little bit about the proposal. It is a 29-story tower, 354 multifamily units is proposed as part of the project. They are, have agreed to 6% workforce units. It's about 20 units total. There's parking and other associated uses, of course, with the residential development as well. Get into the business terms, as proposed, there is a, we have agreed to an eight-year lease on it. They are limited to that eight year. There's nothing beyond that, that eight year. There's also, of course, that 6% workforce housing that they've agreed to is an important piece of, of the project. And then to get into the timeline as well, they have agreed to enter into contracts within six months. And then they would pull permits within 12 months, and then they would have 30 months to complete the project from that point. There's a number of benefits associated with the project, of course. This is a long vacant piece of property, so there, this would be both $107 million investment into downtown Phoenix. There is a, a large construction tax revenue estimated at 1.29 million. It's a one-time tax revenue, and then there would be ongoing rental tax associated with the project estimated at about 170,000 per year. Of course, there's jobs associated with this project. There's the workforce housing that the developer has agreed to. So there's a number of benefits, high-rise construction, potential for the iconic high-rise construction with Will Bruder being on board as well. So with that, we are requesting that the Planning and Economic Development Subcommittee recommend city council authorization to enter into a development agreement for this particular project.
Madam Chair, if I might, just to provide a point of clarification for the Subcommittee. This was not a city-owned parcel that we sent out for request for proposal. This is a privately-owned parcel that is part of Arizona Center. Arizona Center built in the late 1980s and early 1990s, and the two or three remaining sites have been vacant since then. This did submit through our downtown RFP, and our downtown RFP is an opportunity that developers have to be able to submit when they're looking for city assistance. I just wanted to provide you that point of clarification, since it said request for proposal at the beginning. I wanted to make sure that you understood that it wasn't a city-owned parcel. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one card, and that is Nick Wood. I mean, I don't know if you want, it says, "If necessary," do you want to speak? Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions on this item?
Councilman Nowakowski.
You know, I just want to thank our staff and also the developer, because one of the biggest issues we have is parking. And seeing that we're going to have 370 parking spots, that's terrific, because I know a lot of times, being so close to light rail, we're down to zero parking per, per unit. So thank you for taking that into consideration. Also, one of the biggest things we have is a lack of workforce housing in downtown Phoenix. And I know when we sat down, that was one of the things that we worked out, and I just really want to thank you all for, for the parking suggestions that you took in hand, and you listened to the community, and you listened to us, and for the workforce housing.
So I'm super excited. This is in my district. And currently, this, this property has been vacant for 35 years.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Mendoza, that's correct. It's been vacant since, since the, we know for sure, since the late 1980s.
And currently, we generate about $72,000 in property taxes?
That's correct. That is the current 2017 property tax.
After the eight-year lease, we would be collecting about 1.48 million dollars in property taxes?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Mendoza, that would be the projected amount that staff, as we've worked through our analysis, we project, based on the 107 million dollar project, and a 1.5% increase per year, that that would be where we would come in at as an estimate.
Okay. So obviously, I'm super excited about bringing all this revenue to the city, so thank you. And also creating jobs, construction jobs, and workforce housing. So thank you for choosing District 8. And just super excited to support this project. Thank you.
I have some questions, and I'm glad that they brought up the workforce housing. We know that workforce housing, we're in a dire need in, in the state and the city, is lacking workforce housing. So I want to know how we determine workforce housing specifically on a GIPLIT? Or what, how does that conversation come into play?
Absolutely. Madam Chair, you are correct. At a national level, workforce housing has become the conversation in all big cities. And it is a challenge, particularly in the urban cores, for these large cities. As the staff works through the analysis to determine what the incomes will be for workforce housing, we do use HUD's methodology, so that we have a standard that we can follow. And what we use is 80 to 120% of the area median income. And then what we assume is that 30% of your income can be used towards your domicile, whether it's for sale or for rent, that that 30% can be used. And that's a standard used by banks in, in applying for a mortgage. So kind of on a disposable income side, that 30% can be dedicated to your residence.
Thank you, Chris. And what type of jobs would meet this criteria of workforce housing?
Madam Chair, what we would be looking at is, is kind of in that range of workforce housing would be teachers, it would be nurses, it would be the service industry that supports the central city and the downtown area. It could be firefighters, it could be police officers, but it is those, kind of the, the working salaries of, of a traditional workforce.
About, a, a starting teacher, I think, want to say it's 35 at the most, or 40?
Correct. And if you look at, if you look at the single, if you do 80% of the area median income, that puts a salary in this area at about $38,000. So that would be where, would be 80% of the area median income would be, $38,000.
And as a teacher, how would I find out about workforce housing? Where's their information about workforce housing?
We, Madam Chair, we have been working closely with Phoenix Elementary School District and other school districts, Creighton and Baltz, and, and ASU Prep, and other school districts in this area, to be able to share with them information that they can put on their websites for their teachers. But also, should this council choose to move forward with this item, and should the full council choose to move forward with this item, we would make sure that there was a press media on this. And in the development agreement, we would require the developer to make this known to the entities, to workforce entities in this area, that this was available.
And one of my questions is, I saw, I don't know if we could move the slide back to four, right there, project benefits. I noticed that it's 6% workforce units. What I would like to ask the developer, if it's possible to go to 10% of workforce housing units. So I don't know who I speak to. I don't know if it's Nick or the developer, so.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, Nick Wood, Snell Woman, Arizona Center, and I represent North American Group. Madam Chair, we, in the discussions regarding the number of workforce housing units that they're able to provide, it really comes down to an economic analysis. And because of the range, for example, between 80% and 120%, you're looking at units that may go for about $1,000 a month, et cetera. When you're building high-rise development, it's, it's much more expensive than, for example, stick development. You're looking at $430 to $450 a square foot to build it, versus 150 to $200 a square foot to build, stick build. So right now, based on the economics of the deal that we have proposed and are negotiating with the Economic Development Department, 20 is the number that, that, that works, because obviously, they will lose money on these units, but that's okay. I mean, the, the good thing about, about North American is they're a national developer, and providing workforce housing is something that they, they not only are willing to do, it's something that they already do. Now, again, as we negotiate the, the lease payments and other things with the Economic Development Department, you know, we can maybe talk about increasing that number, but right now, based upon what we've been negotiating as far as lease payments and everything else, and the range between the 80% and 120% of the average mean income, 20 is the most that they're able to do financially.
20 units?
20 units, yes.
And how many units are being built?
352.
So we could not go up a few more units? Am I, is that what I'm hearing? What, what I'm hearing is basically what I've learned in this world of development is, it's not penciling out for the developer. That's what, that's what I'm hearing. That's how I'm interpreting what was told to me.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
All right. But yet, we would like the government to provide GIPLIT and holdoff and do 100, I mean, it's, it, we have a need in the city of Phoenix and its workforce units. You're asking for a GIPLIT to extend out. I think there could be a happy medium with this, but I get it. It doesn't pencil out, so.
And as I mentioned, Madam Chair, as we negotiate, for example, the lease payments that we're making to the city, you know, one of the proposals that we have is in year eight, the lease payment is almost half of what the, what the ad valorem tax, maybe about 40% of what the ad valorem tax would otherwise be. So if we can work with some of those numbers, we may be able to increase the actual number of units. But right now, what the, what the GIPLIT adds to them, I mean, the margins in high-rise development, I mean, high-rise development is not for the faint of heart. And the, the margins are pretty thin. You're looking at about a 6% margin in all of the high-rise developments. And when you add a GIPLIT to it, you're adding maybe another 0.7% to 1% to that margin. And, you know, when, when we look at what's happening, you know, in Washington DC and the tariffs and things, the cost of construction continues to increase, material costs, labor costs, the cost of steel is, is, continues to climb, interest rates continue to climb. So again, it's, you're right, Madam Chair, it's, it's all a matter of economics and what they're able and not able to do. But I will commit to you that we will, between now and the council hearing, we'll sit down with city staff and see if there's a way that we can add some more units to the mix. I can't guarantee that, but we're, we're happy to have that discussion.
Okay. So I'm hearing that in between here and now, there will be a discussion?
Madam Chair, I will set a meeting immediately following this to work through those items.
Okay. Go ahead.
Chris, in the downtown area, what does our supply of workforce housing look like?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Mendoza, we did a study in 2016 as we looked at this area, and we used the corner, if memory serves, of Central and Van Buren as kind of our, our crosspoint of our central area, and looked at workforce housing and affordable housing and all housing within a 15-minute commute, if memory serves. I'm pulling from the recess of my memory, I apologize, on that intersection. And what we found was that about 70% of the, of the rental housing, we didn't, we didn't analyze the for-sale housing, we analyzed the rental housing, was within the workforce or affordable size, within a 15-minute commute of that intersection. Where the workforce housing, the, the lack of workforce housing is, is located right along Central Avenue, kind of within walking distance of the Central Avenue light rail. But within one light rail ride or one bus ride to light rail, in that 15-minute commute, it was about 70%. And that gets you to, kind of, in that 15-minute commute, gets you kind of to Camelback and 19th Avenue, gets you to Van Buren and the freeway. It's a, it's about a five-mile ring that that 15 minutes can get you to.
Okay. So it's on the light rail corridor, seems like?
Madam Chair, that's correct. We use it where, we assumed that people that were utilizing workforce housing and affordable housing probably didn't have two forms of transportation for a household. They either had one or none. So we assumed where they could easily get to mass transportation to get to their job.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm going with that.
Yes.
So Fifth Street and Van Buren is a hub, in the sense that it only takes, I would say, maybe 10 minutes to walk to the Van Buren station to get to mass transportation and light rail. Then you can take maybe five minutes to get to Seventh Street, I believe.
Correct.
So there is a need within the central downtown corridor for some workforce housing.
Madam Chair, as you look along that Central Avenue corridor, kind of between the Sevens, that is where the, the strongest, that's where the lack of workforce housing exists. You are correct.
Anybody else have any question? Chris, one of the things that I'm gonna push for now, now that we've gone, but I've been experiencing this and asking about workforce housing, is that I, I think when we're gonna offer incentives in the form of tax breaks to development community, I think we need to create opportunities for ourselves. And what I mean, not for me or for ourselves, I mean for, for the community, because I represent the community. And I would like to look towards, towards the future of how that conversation moves and goes. In particular, really pushing for more affordable units. I know that this came down, came through the downtown RFP, and so I would just like to have staff come back to the Subcommittee to review the downtown RFP and what it involves, and how we can use really this application of this process to create a more sustainable city or downtown, so that in 10 years, 15 years, or even 20 years, we may have all these great downtown, but like a city like Chicago or New York, we don't also have affordability in the downtown area. And so I would like to see the diversity and the mixture of the future, of being able to experience the same thing that everybody else does. So those are just my comments. Does anybody have a motion?
Enter in, for the city of Phoenix and Palm Court Tower to enter a development agreement and lease agreements, and any other agreements necessary with NADG Palm Court Tower.
And I'll second that.
There's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item number six. And Josh.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, I have with me Josh Bennerick, the Deputy Director for the Planning Division. And this first text amendment we will talk about here is a proposed text amendment to add tattoo and body piercing studios within Evans Churchill East character area. I'll go through this one fairly quickly. The Evans Churchill East is what's shown in a highlight right in the middle of the screen on the map. And then it just adds it to the list of, of uses within this portion of the downtown code. Here's the more specific boundaries, Moreland, Fourth Street, Garfield, and then over to Seventh Street. Just adds this particular use as a permitted use. As you all know, this is an area that has a lot of arts community activities. A lot of the older houses have been converted into different commercial uses, and this text amendment just puts that in there. It does enhance the image as arts-oriented community area. It's consistent with the general plan goals and policies. It was approved by the Central City Village Planning Committee 16 to 0, and the Planning Commission to 7 to 0. Staff does recommend approval of this text amendment, as shown in Exhibit A in the staff report. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? This went through the, the Evans Churchill. They, they were the ones who were kind of advocating for it.
Yeah, they, they met with Evans Churchill Neighborhood Group. There is an applicant here, if you wish to hear from as well, you know, briefly, but this has been something that everyone has been supportive of along the way.
Okay. Councilman Nowakowski?
I'm ready to make a motion. I'm not sure if that individual wants to come up.
I have Michael.
If necessary.
Okay. You're in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, he's in favor.
All right. Seeing that I, one of the council members I represent this area, and knowing how that area is changing, it's becoming more of a arts community, and one of the arts projects out there is to make sure that we have all different types of ways to express ourselves. So with that, I'd like to approve staff's recommendation.
Madam Chair and Councilmembers, today we are just on for-
Discussion.
Discussion only. So we will be back on October 2nd for the actual vote at that time, but this was to kind of go through and lay out where staff's at, and so this and the next two ones as well, we are, we're not here for a motion.
Yeah, we're for information and discussion, because we did not have the meeting at the beginning of September, I think, 1st or 2nd.
Correct.
And so this is the catch-up meeting for the October 2nd. So everything's for information and discussion. So we'll see you in October 2nd. All right, item seven.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, this is also a text amendment to the downtown code, and this one is to change the height regulating map for a parcel at the northwest corner of Central Avenue in Moletta, shown with a star right here on the screen before you. Directly to the north is the Spaghetti Factory. Across the street is Burton Bar Library. The construction activity that you see in this aerial is now an apartment project, and McDowell Road is the major arterial just to, to the north, by way of your bearings, and you have Roosevelt Neighborhood off to your east. The existing height on this particular property is 75 feet, and the way the downtown code is set up is that there are height regulating maps that are embedded as part of the text. So when you want to change the height within the downtown code, you have to actually do a text amendment to do that. And so these height regulating maps show this parcel as 75 feet in height, which was a reflection of the zoning at the time the downtown code was adopted, because it was supposed to be Phase 2 of the project to the south. However, that never developed, and the applicant now is requesting the height that we'll talk about in just a minute. By way of boundaries, you can see the additional height around it, 250 feet up along Central Avenue, for parcels both on the, the east and west sides, even though that's not what's built. And then the corresponding height in the neighborhood off to the west is 40 feet. The applicant's proposal would have the height limited to 40 feet within the first 100 feet of the property line towards the residence, then 150 feet in building height could be built within 150 feet of that property line, and then up to the full 180 feet up along Central Avenue. I should note that there's an additional 30-foot landscape area along the back portion of this property that is for retention from the parcel to the south, so you should add 30 feet to each of those numbers to really get to the distance of where that's at, however, that area is not land that the applicant controls.
Before you switch that, Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we have 250 on both sides of the project, except for that 75, and across the street it's all 250. Was that 75, 75 ever 250 at one time, or has it always been 75? And why would we actually have everything around there be 250 feet and limit just that space to 75?
Madam Chair, Councilman Nowakowski, I, a couple of slides and we're gonna get there and, and, and show you. So, big picture, this is within the, the downtown code. It's next to the light rail station. It does help to support the goal of creating a vibrant downtown. In this particular case, the Central City Village Planning Committee voted to deny the request, 13 to 3. The Planning Commission was 4 to 1. Let me back up here to this. And so this particular parcel was part of a rezoning application. And when that was rezoned, prior to that, that parcel had 250 feet of height. And so what happened when that whole parcel went through was, they wanted additional density to develop that parcel. And so the zoning ordinance at the time did not have, it, it had a different ability to get height. And so what they did was apply for what was called urban residential, was the zoning, that they downzoned that property to, and then they built the first phase of that project you see to the south. And that took away, they gave up their height willingly, but they got additional density as part of doing that project.
Now, Alan, when did that actually happen? Was that before the light rail or after the light rail?
Councilwoman, Chairman Pastor and Councilman Nowakowski, that was in 2001, when they did that zoning case.
And light rail started?
Light rail was built.
In 2008.
Okay.
So this is prior to?
It was, it was prior to. And so you look at, and even going back further, the reason there's 250 feet of building height in this area was the city went through a process in the early 1980s to try and connect what was some previous height approvals in Uptown, in Midtown area, along with Downtown, to have the Central Avenue corridor. And so the city went through and put HRI incentive height on, that gave this 250 feet of height, and I think that was back in 81 when we did that. And then that's what that height is there, even though you don't see the, the height that's been built, it was part of the city's effort to intensify Central Avenue and kind of continue to connect those areas, and that be our most intense area in the city.
So a question on that. When it was downsized to 75, the property that they're looking to upsize, that went through a whole process with the neighborhood. And their intent, their, the 75's intent was to build 75 on the other side. However, I'm, the property was sold, and now the new property owners want to intensify or move up to 250, or how high? Because I'm adding up for 60.
So Chairwoman and Councilman Nowakowski, the applicant's original proposal was for 250 feet of, of building height, and they did have some slightly different step-back provisions. In discussions with the neighborhood to the west, they agreed to lower the height into these increased setbacks. And so what you see there is, within 100 feet of the west property line, the maximum building height is going to be 40 feet. And then from that area of 150 feet to that property line, they could go up to 150 feet in height, and they wouldn't get their full 180 until they are 150 feet away from that west property line. And there's additional 30 feet of this area that's shown in green, and that's their retention basin for the Artisan Lost Project to the south. So the current applicant doesn't own that, so they can't count that as part of something they could commit to, but they can't develop that area because it's the retention for the project to the south. south and for this project, because it was originally, as you noted, part of one whole development.
So the intent of me putting this on for information and discussion was to be able then to have neighborhoods and the representative of that property here to have this discussion in order for October 2nd when we're going to take a vote. But I think because it was placed as information and discussion, they'll just wait till October 2nd. So I guess for us, for me, it's knowledge for me because I know this is a contentious rezoning. And so I anticipate that that October 2nd will have a different type of energy in here. My question is, I guess where I'm at is that was an agreement with all that, with the neighborhood, because that's what Roosevelt -- no, it's not FQ story. What neighborhood is that?
It's Roosevelt.
It's Roosevelt.
It's Roosevelt. And Roosevelt is a very active neighborhood. And I think it was probably, they were happy that they went to 75 and knew that that was the agreement amongst them and the developer and the neighborhood. So it'll be very interesting to see where they stand with this new proposal. Does anybody know? I haven't read the planning or any, I didn't read any of the commission stuff. Has it gone through?
So, Madam Chair, members of Subcommittee, yes, it did. So it went to the Village Planning Committee as well as the Planning Commission. And so it was denied at the Central City.
Failed at the Village.
Thirteen to three.
Okay.
And was approved four to one at the Planning Commission.
Very interesting.
It is, you know, as you note, it is an area along Central Avenue. You have a light rail line. You have a lot of intensity that is approved but not really built. So the neighbor's perception of what's there doesn't really reflect the zoning realities on a lot of those properties. But they do understand, because they're a very sophisticated neighborhood group, that this particular parcel has the 75 feet in height, and that was part of that agreed-upon discussion when they downzoned to do the Artisan Lost Project. And so they have had a lot of discussions back and forth with the neighbors. That's where they came up with some of that height compromise. But last time I talked to some of the neighborhood representatives, they still weren't supportive of the request.
Okay. There are no cards. Anybody else have questions?
So the agreement of the 75 feet was with the previous owner, correct? Not with the current owner and the neighborhood?
Correct. Madam Chair, Councilwoman Mendoza, it was the prior owner who did the Artisan Lost Project. And so as part of that, he built the first phase, which is the south half you see in the 75 feet. And then subsequently has sold that parcel, and the new owner is the one that's asking for the increase in height.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, we look forward to October 2nd. So, item number eight.
Madam Chair, there was a Subcommittee. Item number eight is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance for medical marijuana dispensary operating hours. And so this particular text amendment is one that staff has initiated. There is an issue with the way that the hours are established for medical marijuana dispensaries, and we'll talk a little bit about that here as we go through this presentation. I do want to introduce Mr. Teresa Hillner, who is in charge of our medical marijuana zoning issues within the department for any questions here. But I'll walk us through here real quick. So currently, our hours are 8:00 in the morning, no later than 7:00 p.m. at night. And we adopted those rules prior to the state of Arizona adopting their rules. So when the medical marijuana initiative passed, it gave rulemaking authority to the Arizona Department of Health Services. We adopted our regulations prior to them coming up with theirs. And they adopted their regulations to say no earlier than 8:00 in the morning, but they did allow the hours to go no later than 10:00 p.m. And so that's what is established via the Department of Health Services rules. So what happened is, in the intervening years, we have had a number of different dispensaries, I think there are eight total, that have come forward and gotten a variance to approve their hours to stay open until 10:00 p.m. And subsequently, we had a discussion that you'll all recall about increasing some of our spacing requirements. This was in, for medical marijuana, this was in the lead-up to the potential ballot measure to make marijuana legal recreationally. And we increased our spacing requirements. At that time, we talked about, should we increase the hours to 10 o'clock? The collective wisdom of the council was, we don't want to have that additional time. We want to stick with the 7:00 p.m. And there was a lot of concern about what was the potential of recreational marijuana. So at that time, staff left it at 7:00 p.m. What has happened subsequently is people have come back in and tried to get variances because recreational marijuana did not pass. But staff has said, the board can't grant a variance to something that the council debated and decided we did not want to increase the hours of operation. So the entire argument that the operators were making prior to the new text amendment was that we adopted our rules prior to the state. So we didn't have the benefit of what the state was going to do, and so therefore, that was the basis of them saying that our rules were outdated and that was their need for a variance. Subsequently, what has happened is now they're making the argument, saying, well, that's unfair. You let these other ones that got in here, they're the ones that came in, and they now have the benefit of being open until 10:00 p.m. So we were asked to take a look at this text amendment to increase those hours. By way of doing that research, we looked at what other cities are doing within the state. You see that information here before you, 8:00, 7:00, and all the way up to 10:00 p.m. in some cases. What we're proposing with this text amendment would be an increase from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. to allow them to operate. That would level the playing field with those ones that were approved for their variances beforehand. This has gone through several of the Village Planning Committees. It was approved with nine of them. The Rio Vista Village wanted to make some modifications. The Maryville Village Planning Committee denied it by a five to four vote, and four of them did not have a quorum to hear this particular item.
You know which ones did not have a quorum? And with, before you go there, with them not having a quorum, we still have a month out to get back into those villages.
Madam Chair, members of Subcommittee, we could certainly go back on those and ask the chair.
Right.
Yeah, you know, between now and October. I don't know what their dates are, but we can certainly go back to them and talk. And even if it's not before the Subcommittee, we would have time before the full council because you guys would, in theory, take action October. Council would be November, so we can go back and offer them.
So which Subcommittee or which villages didn't have a quorum?
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, Awatuki Foothills VPC, Deer Valley VPC, Estrella VPC, and North Mountain VPC.
Deer Valley, Awatuki.
North Mountain and Estrella.
We have an opportunity then to go back. Okay.
That's correct. So with that, Planning Commission was approved seven to zero. And when we come back to you in October, we'll be asking for a recommendation of approval per the Planning Commission recommendation. We'll also give an update on what villages we have been able to get back to between now and then.
I think, I have several questions. I don't know if anybody else does. Okay. Why won't we just leave the code the way it is?
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, the code as it sits today creates an inequity between some of the operators that got variance approval prior to the text amendment. And that's the complaint that you will hear from folks who represent some of those dispensaries where they've come in and actually tried to get variances and were denied because of that council discussion where, rightly so, in the wake of not knowing what was going to happen with recreational marijuana, the council took the correct approach of saying, I don't want to increase the hours. We don't know what's going to happen with recreational marijuana. So you guys said, no, let's leave it at 7:00 p.m. And then subsequently, what that does is take away the argument that the others made, which was that our rules were adopted prior to the state enacting their requirements. And so we didn't have that benefit, and that's what they argued to get variances before. Now we've said, no, the council debated it as part of that text amendment and decided not to do that. And so that makes it very, very difficult for them to get any variances approved for the additional hours. And so that's why we bring the text amendment forward, to try and level that playing field. I would note for the record that when we start out with medical marijuana, the department was meeting monthly with the police vice unit to try and make sure we stayed on top of any issues or problems that were arising. And we have not had any of those issues really come up, so much so that they were moved back to every other month and every quarter. And now it's a couple times a year that staff is sitting down because there just aren't really any issues with these dispensaries. Really, what we're finding is that the barriers to entry are so much because it's so expensive to get in that people really are following the rules and doing the right thing. They're not willing to entertain an employee doing shady things because they've got a whole lot of capital at risk. So we're not seeing those kind of problems. What we're seeing is those people reporting other things in areas proximate to them with concerns about, you know, crime and other things because they have cameras and security and all that stuff. And so those people are helping patrol other areas in the neighborhood to make sure that things are going well because they don't want to be associated with, you know, any kind of nefarious activity.
I have another question, and the question is, who would be against this text amendment? Who would not want to support this?
Madam Chair, members of Subcommittee, I can imagine some of the dispensary operators who are now open until 10:00 p.m. might not want some of the others to have that same ability. We really have not seen, other than a few cases here or there, we haven't seen a significant outcry from the public relative to medical marijuana. There's a few cases here and there, you know, in hotspots. Councilman Nowakowski had one by a library that you heard about a few months back. Councilwoman Stark has one in her North Mountain area that's ongoing right now. But outside of a few hotspot areas, it really hasn't been something that the public's been really concerned about.
Any other questions? I have a card. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Now, most of these, all these dispensaries are in industrial areas, correct?
Yeah, Chairwoman Pastore, Councilman Nowakowski, the dispensaries by way of their zoning can be in C-2. So all of the cultivation infusion, that's all A-1. But there are dispensaries that are in C-2. So for example, Metro Center Mall has one that's, you know, in the Ring Road, you know, outside there. That's not an industrial area.
Central Thomas.
And Alan, the other thing too is that we talked about a text amendment with that incident with our library last time, and that you were all going to bring something to this meeting regarding, you know, proximity to a library and including that as one of our community spaces. Have you worked on that yet, or?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman or Councilman Nowakowski, yes. Staff has worked on that. In fact, I have a meeting with them to go over their research early next week. And so they've been working on that because, as you'll recall, part of the discussion around that was, we have a lot of spacing requirements. And so we can't use our zoning authority to make it so that no one can locate. And so we've been trying to work with what could we do to have some spacing requirements there and still be able to say we have areas where these can locate. And so I'll be setting up a meeting, you know, with you to talk about that and the rest of the Subcommittee members in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, I don't have a problem if we're going to treat everyone the same. There were some individuals that happened to extend their hours because they went through the process. And I know that it's a very competitive industry, and that we've already had individuals asking, why do those individuals are able to open until 10? Why aren't we and the state allows and all that? So if we're going to go with the state hours, I'm open to that.
Okay. So when we vote in October, we'll be ready. We'll have a quick meeting then.
Right.
Are there any other questions? Go ahead.
And I think, I think I know the answer to this, but the state allows to 10 o'clock, and we allow to 8. Is that because we were given the ability to have stricter rules than what the state put together and formulated?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Stark, that's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, because it's DHS that makes a rule. It's not a state law. Where the legislature didn't pass this law saying, this is what you have to do. It's DHS that has a rule that we can be more restrictive on.
Okay, thanks. We could be, I asked this question, I remember asking, we could be more restrictive, however, then it will be unfair and inequitable.
Correct, correct, with the other ones that already got approved.
Right.
But it doesn't have the legal challenge of saying that we are not consistent with state law because the state law gives the rulemaking authority to DHS, and that's just a rule that they have made that says you can be open until 10. So we couldn't say we want to be open later than 10, but we could be more restrictive.
Restrictive, got it. Lindsey Shuby, I don't know if you, it's available to speak.
Lindsey Shuby, Gammage and Burnham, two North Central. Zoning attorneys always want to speak. We always, I grew up in the Paul Gilbert School of Law. You never see a microphone that you do not just speak out for just two minutes. I just want to echo what Alan said. He did a very thorough presentation. You're not the only jurisdiction looking at increasing hours, but you guys are in a unique predicament in that some dispensaries got the variance and some didn't. And Grady Gammage and I teach at the MRed program, and we say zoning is not there to give a competitive advantage to one business over the other. And that's the sticky wicket that you guys are in here. And so I've got clients who got it. You know, they're thrilled. They're not going to come out and oppose. I have asked, you know, but it's fair, you know? And so for the people that don't have it, I'll be here on the third. Again, won't speak then, but it's just a predicament in terms of the fairness of it and the zoning ordinance giving any type of advantages to one competitor over another.
Thank you. Thank you. Alan, who would not receive a variance? Or who didn't receive a variance? I mean, if I applied and went through the whole process, what would, how would I not receive it, I guess? Would it be just the?
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, in order to get a variance, the hearing officer has to find that you meet the four variance tests. And so one of those tests is it can't be a self-imposed, you know, hardship. And so what they, i.e., I want it because that's what I want to do. And so what the prior ones were able to argue successfully was because we didn't have the benefit, we being the council, didn't have the benefit of the state rules that said you'd go till 10. We went till 7. Therefore, it wasn't something that was, that they had imposed on themselves and they had done. It was something that we didn't have the benefit, we didn't have the benefit of updated laws and requirements of time, which was the DHS rules. And then in doing that, that's why they were able to argue that we should be, they should be able to be open until 10:00 p.m. And it really was that argument that allowed them to get the variance to the hours of operation. And because then council did debate that when it came back around to look at the expansion of the distancing requirements, we couldn't then accept that as an argument because we had public discussion with the council about just doing that fact. And you can't, if the legislative body has said, this is what the requirements are and they debated it, you can't really then stand before the board and the hearing officers and say, well, the rules that were adopted before didn't take into effect this because it did take into effect. You guys debated it, and you said, no, we're not going to do that.
Got it. I was just, for the public, like, if you're watching it, and I would be talking to the TV saying, well, why not? Or what happened? So, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. This will be on our October 2nd?
Fourth.
Second meeting. We have call to the public. I have no cards. Call to the public. Are there any future agenda items? Go ahead, Councilwoman Stark.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to put on the radar, since our last discussion at our council meeting on a zoning case, the issue of the subdivision waiver processes.
Okay.
More work for Alan.
Got it. Councilwoman Nowakowski?
And Madam Chair, I'd like to have a study on workforce housing within the downtown and the main corridor of the light rail.
Okay.
Briefing and update.
Okay. And then, in the near future, I would like to have information on the status of the Phoenix Central Business District, existing redevelopment areas, and the formation of opportunity zones. All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.